We are live, we are live. I'll let people connect real quick. As I'm trying to go live on TikTok as well. Okay, having some technical difficulties with TikTok. Okay, I'll just type in here, this is overtake. Bear with me, uh, give people time to get on. Good evening, good evening, good evening. Still trying to get connected to TikTok live. Sorry, I didn't have all this together, but moving forward. Okay, close, let's go. Two, one, and we are going live on TikTok. Hello, hello, hello. Hello. Going live for uh, the first time on TikTok, uh, as far as with um me running as candidate for city council, District One in Detroit, Michigan, so it's putting that out there. I am a write-in candidate, my name is James Chandler, a write-in candidate for Detroit District One. Running in Detroit District One against uh, Joe, James Tate, pro temp James Tate, he's been in office sixteen years, running against him. Um, trying to implement some new things, some fresh ideas and um just fighting for the people, um, we're tired of seeing the same old, same old, uh, they're going by the same program book, uh, led by Mayor Duggan. And um, there's mixed uh, feelings about the situation because a lot of people are okay with the way things are, but really, they say that, they say that, but when you really feel the pain eh, of what's been going on, we know it's not the truth that they feel okay about it. Something has to change. Something has to change, we're gonna talk about that uh, tonight, um. So hello again, I am James Chandler, running for city council District One in Detroit. Um, they sent out the early ballots, I got mine today. Um, me, I work with Black Heritage um, Federation. Um, and we are uh, we wanna push people to actually go to the polls and vote. Don't just, don't just right the ballot, okay? If you're gonna do it, you can use it as a uh, a refresher, maybe to take it with you, so you can mark what you had written down on, on notes at the booth. Um, but you might wanna go in, we, we want people to go in and vote November fourth. Um, because they're, they have been cheating, they have been cheating. Um, hello everyone, welcome, welcome, uh, TikTok, I see uh, visitors coming in. I'm James Chandler, running for city council, uh, District One in Detroit, Michigan, against James Tate. Just wanted to get on here, um, a lot of people got their ballots, that's what I'm going over, early ballots. We want you guys to go in and vote at the polls. Try not to do this, you know, this is, I know this is easy, I know it's convenient for senior citizens, you know, and uh, people with disability, disabilities, uh, but they have been cheating in uh, the elections, you know, uh, Janice Winfrey, uh, the council members has been sweeping things under the rug, of course, there's corruption. And um, they even tried to psych out a lot of the write-in candidates, me being one of them. You know, uh, when I was putting in uh, my candidacy, you know, they told us not to check off primary elections, which would've got us on the ballot. They told us to, don't check that off, but check off general election. You know, which was a, a psych in our uh, you know, to push her off, push us off that path. Uh, one way that the Department of Elections had a part in that, you know. Uh, so again, I'm a write-in candidate. Um, and I have a few write-in candidate buddies that's running too, for different positions that um, has, we're on the same level, uh, have the same idea in mind, we wanna get candidates into, that is righteous. Excuse me, righteous candidates, um, that's gonna push the needle where it needs to go. Uh, we still have price gouging, uh, nobody's been really trying to deal with that situation. It's, it's been this whole thing about um Democrats, Republicans, and uh, one is higher up than the other one. They're, they're both pointing fingers at one another, saying which one's worse, which one's worse. When they're both are worse, they, they both are the enemies, they both have given into treason, they both have uh, biases. They both have corruption in them, you know, and when there's fraud and um this uh, you know, the, they're cheating in the votes, you know, that, you know, that within itself, you know, makes it hard to get our voices heard. Because, you know, our people, African Americans, you know, it was hard for us to, you know, even be a part of that. And, and now they wanna twist and turn, now that we have a chance to vote, they wanna make things harder or do things like that. Um, I'm, I'm a candidate running to help every individual, I'm for the quality of life for every individual. Um, I'm gonna go over a few of my policies and different things I wanna do. Um, of course, so you can get, get a better understanding of who I am and what I'm trying to do, okay? So the three things that I'm fighting for is reparations, okay? Undenied aid and government transparency. I've been hitting hard on those three, you know, um. Um, I've been working as an activist behind the scenes, sending things to um, legislation, because I know what I'm really wanna do, it's gonna hit nationally, not just local, you know? Even though I have to make my focus local because of city council is a local, uh, it's a local um, thing that's going on, that we have to abide by and we have to go by the charter, Detroit Charter. But, you know, um, I am a person of human rights for all the individuals and um, this, this, this reaches everywhere, everyone is suffering with price gouging. Everyone is suffering with price gouging, first of all. Everyone is su- suffering with uh, housing inclusion, you know, um, affordable housing. We, a lot of people talked about this thing and we promised the same thing, you hear this over and over again, but you're not gonna hear it like this, because nobody's willing to talk about what needs to be done, these fresh ideas. These fresh ideas, but I wanna hit this again. So you have this ballot, they sent it out, early ballots. I want you guys to go in at the polls and really vote. You know, this was set, set off the numbers, even when they're trying to cheat, you know, uh, if they're trying to cheat, uh, this will make it difficult for them to try, try to cheat, because when this is in the, the system, they can manipulate, they can manipulate, right? But if you go in there, uh, I, I believe that it, it will help bring in more numbers and get more people to vote. Shalom, sister. Thank you, thank you, thank you, just had to get live, uh, I know um, some people I'm running with, uh, a friend, uh, Teresa Williams is running for city clerk, I want you guys to go vote for her. Therese, Teresa Williams, um, city clerk, she's running against Janice Winfrey. We gotta get Janice Winfrey out of there, you know, she's been in there, uh, she's overseeing her own elections at this time in the midst of us with these, with these uh, uh, cheating elections, been cheating all this time and doing under-table stuff. You know, um, and they're holding hands with Duggan, you know, Sheffield, all of them. A lot of people are voting for Sheffield for mayor and and um, like Kenlock says, and you know, um, I'm voting for Kenlock, Pastor Kenlock, a lot of people have their own differences with that, but um, like he said, you know, this lady has been in office. And if she says she, if she really cared for Detroit, she would've been doing what she's supposed to do from the beginning, to help Detroit. So we wanna put that out there, you know, that's government transparency. So go to the polls, vote us in, okay? So we have Teresa Williams running for uh, city clerk. My name is James Chandler, I'm running for District One, Detroit, Michigan, uh, city council. And we have Tonya Gladney running for District Three, city council, okay? Um, so these are some of the people I was gonna vote for, I have it written down on my ballot here. Um, Solomon Kenlock for mayor, okay? We don't wanna vote Mary Sheffield in if you're in Detroit, okay? Um, we don't wanna, for clerk, we don't wanna vote Janice Winfrey, we wanna vote Teresa Williams. Teresa Williams, okay? That's T H E R E S A, Williams. City council at large, there's a write-in candidate, Ramon Jackson. He's one of, he's one of the advocates that's coming forth, you'll probably, you've probably seen him. Um, he's, he's called out, um, Janice Winfrey in, in this cheating. And, and um, he's gotten the ball rolling with this thing, um, that they caught them cheating. Janice Winfrey, he went before the courts, he went before Lansing, uh, with, with his pastor, um, and they spoke. Um, even um, with uh, President Donald Trump, you know, they know that the election's been rigged, you know, they know the truth. Um, so city council at large, we have Ramon Jackson, he's a write-in candidate, so you have to write him in, just like you have to write me in, James Chandler, District One, Detroit, okay? Um, you can vote for not more than two in city council at large, so Ramon Jackson. And the other candidate, hmm, I didn't mark no second person, because Mary Water's been in there a long time. And uh, she has health issues, so I wouldn't even really consider, uh, you know, um um, Coleman A. Young, the, the second, you know, there's some discrepancies about his election, he's been sitting on the seat right along with Mary Sheffield, so, you know, and I don't really know much about Janay El- Janay, you know? Um, but I was thinking about going right along with her, but so far I have just Ramon Jackson as city council at large, but um, and then city council District One, myself, James Chandler, I'm running against James Tate Junior, um, but mark me in, write me in, James Chandler for District One. Police Commissioner, there's Oliver, um, Oliver, last name spelled G A N T T. Um, there's another guy running for police commissioner, but you know, um, I've seen Oliver uh, face to face and met him. Um, and he has some good ideas, you know, so um, we need government transparency even with the, with the, with the police, you know? So I know he's been through some things with, with the police, uh, and, and seeing how corrupt they are, right? So we need a commissioner that's gonna stand for the people and stand for justice and uh, put these cops away as well, and not just give them all this immunity. Um, again, my feelings about President Donald Trump, you know, you know, he's up and down, you know, he's got some good things going, but he's also got a whole lot of bad things going against him. You know, and I don't believe that a president should have so much immunity, you know, just like the police shouldn't have immunity. You know, what's, what's wrong is wrong, right? They should be caught out on it, and that's that, right? So, let's get into some of my policies here. Right, uh, if you want to back me, uh, even to my family members, all you have to do is share my posts. I, I be on Facebook a lot, you can look me up, James Chandler on Facebook, uh, TikTok, Jay Chandler. Uh, you're seeing my TikTok live now, so um, you can share my posts, uh, Detroit District One. So here we go, let's get into it. This is a speech, I'm gonna go ahead and say it, right here, if you just bear with me. And this will show forth my plans and policies with everything, and how um, I plan to work my um, seat, okay? My brothers and sisters, citizens of Detroit and fellow Americans, we stand at a crossroads, and I must ask you, how long will justice, fairness and truth be denied a voice in our city and in our nation? How long will the people of Detroit and America at large be silenced, ignored and dismissed? The issue, number one, housing justice. Today, families, seniors and working people are being thrown out of their homes for small rent shortfalls, sometimes less than the cost of groceries for the month. Does that sound like justice? Does that sound like fairness? That is why we demand the tenant protection threshold law, right? We gotta change some laws and some policies. See, the community has been putting policies above law, and that is against the law. You know, if it's not constitutional, they're going against your rights, your human rights, that's what I'm standing for, the quality of life, alright, human rights. That is why we demand the tenant protection threshold law, we gotta put that up, up front. A law that says no tenant can be evicted unless they owe at least six months of unpaid rent. Why? Because eviction should never be a weapon used against those who are only slightly behind. Because families deserve stability, children deserve to stay in school, and our tax dollars shouldn't be wasted on emergency shelters, when people could have stayed in their homes. Housing is a human right, and Detroit must lead the way. Okay? Somebody might agree with that, I'm sure a lot of people will agree with that. You know, it would save people the time, the energy, the money, um, it would give people more time, and this won't just help uh, the tenant, but the, the leasing agent, right? Um, those who's providing the property, so if they're having problems getting this money from you, they have time to, to uh, set up some money aside or to try to get it out of the person within that six-month range, right? Or whatever job they're working, they can set the balance straight themselves, right? Um, and maybe have grace on that person, or maybe say, okay, six months up, you gotta go, and that's the rule, right? But six months, you know, i- it's not too short, it's not too far, you know, i- it's, 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 it's reasonable, right? Uh, reasonable and it, and it, and it um, it helps the quality of life, right? Why? Because eviction should never be a weapon used against those who are only slightly behind. Because families deserve stability, children deserve, deserve to stay in school, and our tax dollars shouldn't be wasted on emergency shelters, when people could have stayed in their homes. Housing is a human right, and Detroit must lead the way. Number two, on accountability. Number two, on accountability. If the people can file complaints through hotlines, forms and letters against the powerless, usually on their websites, right? Why can't we just as easily file complaints against the powerful? Against police officers, attorney generals, judges and legislators? Why is justice accessible when it crushes the weak, but blocked when it challenges the strong? Shouldn't our voices count the same, no matter who we are holding accountable, right? And, and to that point, we see that impeachment, even of our president, has been the hardest thing to do, it shouldn't be this hard. If we wanna impeach somebody, if the people say impeach, i- it shouldn't take no longer than thirty days, right? That, that's usually the, the lawful goal, they say thirty-one days, thirty days, you know, uh, it has to be something that's impeachable, right, something that's impeachable, right? Impeach this person, hold them accountable, right? Call them out on it, take them to court on it, right? Impeachable. They haven't been taking impeachment, they've been taking it very lightly, they haven't been taking it seriously. And that's two, on accountability. The, the courts too, the judges too, they're been, they, they are corrupt as well. I've been wanting to slap the thirty-six district court upside the head for the longest, the judicial tenure commission upside the head for the longest, for the bribery, right, for the extortion, right? For the corruption against the people. Number three, on corruption. When the thirty-six district court in Detroit and the judicial tenure commission are linked to bias, extortion and bribery, shouldn't they lose their licenses? Shouldn't they repay what they've stolen from their public trust? Why should crooked courts and corrupt commissions continue to operate after betraying the people? As I just said. So that's one, housing justice, two, on accountability, on accountability, three, on corruption, four, on economics. Detroit, listen to this, this is to Detroit. Again, I'm James Chandler, running for city council District One, I need to be written in, vote me in, write me in, write my name, James Chandler on the ballot. District One, city council, that's what I'm running for, on econ- economics. Detroit, listen, listen, Detroit has been locked into a three billion budget for decades. Three billion budget for decades, right? That's a lot for one person, right? That's a lot for a city, you know? Um, but are we really poor? Could be more, right, it could be more. Or are we sitting on one of the most valuable resources in the world, the Great Lakes? While our people still struggle, right? So apparently it's not enough for a city, right? Our people are still struggling, with a three billion dollar budget, alright? And as um, um, our future city clerk, hopefully you go and vote for her, Teresa Williams explained that this is how, this is what they do. Say for instance, this is the three billion dollars they give Detroit. Right? They take this much of it for themselves and give Detroit this much. And then, from this, they take some of that and expect Detroit to work with that. Cause they split it off into these different cities outside of Detroit, they give it to other people, they're stealing our money and giving it to other cities, right? So again, on economics, Detroit has been locked into a three billion budget for decades, but are we really poor? Or are we sitting on one of the most valuable resources in the world, the Great Lakes, while our people still struggle? If our water fuels other cities, if our banks profit off our deposits, if industries thrive here, why are African Americans who built this city still waiting for reinvestment and reparations? Again, I'm fighting for reparations, I'm writing, I'm fighting for reparations, for undenied aid. This, this includes other people, not just African Americans. Reparations includes African Americans, reparations is for African Americans, let me put that out there, make that clear. We deserve restitution, a lot of people don't believe that, but we, we deserve restitution, our people, okay? Reparations is for African Americans. Undenied aid is for everyone. So I'm not leaving other nations or other people out of it, undenied aid is for everyone, right? So reparations, undenied aid and government transparency. I've also put out a petition, it's already been out there, it's been seen by Janice Winfrey and all of them. Um, forty-three policies I was willing to implement into law, you know, this is why I'm trying to hit nationally. You know, I sent that out to senators, sent it out to the president, and again, and, and a lot of the stuff that Trump has been doing, you know, it seems like he's, you know, they looked at it, you know, some of that stuff kinda hits along the lines of, you know, um, uh, some of the things he, 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 um, he, he's done as far as, you know, going after, you know, corrupt people, of course he's using it against his, you know, his own will. But of course, you know, uh, like the Bilderberg's and these people that's been, you know, causing these wars and, you know, setting people he's calling people out on the corruption, you know, and I'm gonna try to go over like, um, some of those policies I have in my petition. Um, but I would really like those to become law, uh, one of which I'm gonna go into, cause it, it hits on economics really well. Um, of what I'm talking about here, the banks, right? If our water fuels other cities, if our banks profit off our deposits, if industries thrive here, why are African Americans who built this city still waiting for reinvestment and reparations? Is it a time we demand an economy that grows with us, not against us? So there's one, talked about, housing justice, the issue of housing justice, two, on accountability, three, on corruption, four, on economics, five, on auto and insurance industries. Why were cars once built to last five hundred thousand miles, yet today a vehicle is called worthless? At two hundred nine thousand seven hundred and ninety-nine, right? Why do insurers strip families of investments by devaluing vehicles too early? They devalue, um, vehicles too early. From five hundred thousand to these low mileages now, and it's seem, you know, worthless? All of a sudden, right? Isn't that fraud by design? And why should car dealerships ruin credit records with predatory checks when no purchase is made? A lot of times they check your credit, and you don't even get no car from them. You don't even hear from them no more, after they done checked your credit, right? And they hit you with this heavy, you know, mark on your credit, right? Isn't it time for a car credit recall law, again, here's another law, right? Car credit recall law that protects working people. So, so you can be able to recall, um, what they checked, and be able to get that credit back on track. Because you, you ain't, you ain't get no product, right? Six, on transit. Why are rioters stranded along West Eight Mile with no bus stops, no shelters and no dignity, while D-Dot collects millions? And again, this is District One I'm talking about. Why does a thirty-one day pass still cost seventy dollars, when so many can't afford it? Now, wherever, you know, D-Dot runs throughout different districts, so, um, I'm sure that, that cost of, you know, that payment is still the same. You know, seventy dollars for a bus pass, you know, right? When so many can't afford it, shouldn't public transit serve the people, not punish them? And wouldn't a tradition like bless somebody at the bus stop day remind us that when systems fail, community, community must prevail? So, I had some holidays in mind, so I wanted to start off with some holidays, just something, um, it could be quicker than make, changing a law. You know, they make it so hard for you to change a law, and to, you gotta go back and forth the legislation, you gotta take it to court sometimes, you gotta talk to the president sometimes, you gotta talk to the governor, you know, and these people are stiff-necked, right? But something as simple as a holiday could change the course of somebody's life and avenue of living, right? It could better the quality of life. For example, as I stated, bless somebody at the bus stop day, so this would be considered a day, um, uh, we just pick a month, right, January first, right, every January first, every year, you know, our neighboring community, see somebody at the bus stop, and just stop and bless them at the bus stop. They can bless them with money, monetary gifts, a car, you know, people would be happy to, oh, you blessed me with a car? People would be happy to get a car from somebody, just a random person, just blessing somebody at the bus stop. You know, people's hearts are big, you never know what can happen out of this day. And it could change somebody's course of life, course of thinking, cause you don't know what people are thinking or what they're going through. Uh, they could be ready to blow up, blow up, blow up, they could be ready to blow off their head, you know, go attack somebody, rob somebody, but just that thought, right, then and there. You know, go attack somebody, rob somebody, but just that thought, right, then and there. Of course, it's a nice little holiday, and it changed their mindset. Wow, people are kind, wow, people are beautiful, wow, life is worth living, right? Don't have to go commit suicide because you're going through. Right? We should be concerned about the quality of life. This is why we need righteous individuals running in these offices and get these corrupt people out that's just money hungry. And don't care about the people, and don't care about change, you know, they talk a good gang just to get voted in, but once they're in there, they don't do nothing for us. Right? They don't mention what I'm mentioning, right? So, that's transit, that's on transit, six, going to, going to number seven, on banks. Why do banks multiply our deposits for their gain, yet return so little to the people who make it possible? Shouldn't they pay three to five years of interest on every dollar deposited? If they profit off our money, why shouldn't the people share that wealth? Isn't that how we make the American dream real, by putting wealth back into the hands of those who earned it? Right? So, just like the banks make money off our interests, just our money sitting in that bank. They're making money off our, the the interest buildup, right? Um, wouldn't it be nice for us to get a portion of that back, right? Most of that back, right? It would help a great deal, right? It'll it'll be just like, um, Bitcoin. You know, just sitting our money there and it's earning some income, just sitting there, right overnight. We can sleep and know that our money is, um, adding up by how long it sits in the bank. Right? And of course, they got things like CDs and stuff like that, but I'm talking about just sitting there without starting a CD, um. Operation or this, that and the other, you know, see, you know, that'd be a nice, uh, another portion you can do, of course, you could still do that. But still, with our money just sitting in a savings account, sitting in a checking account, it should be able to con- to convert those interest over, right? Two. Eight, on history and reparations. Why were Aunt Jem- Jemima, Uncle Ben and a native woman on the land of lakes, old lakes buttery raised? While we are told to get over centuries of oppression. And not to mention what happened with Cracker Barrel and how that situation turned out in their favor, but they wanna hush us up. In centuries of oppression. And say we don't deserve reparations or restitution, right? Reparations are not charity, they are justice. Justice delayed has been justice denied. But isn't it time justice delivered became our reality? Right? Eight, Resolution Historic Prices Day, this is another holiday I had in mind. Resolution Historic Prices Day. And now arise to propose a bold action for economic justice and national restoration. Recognizing and establishing Historic Prices Day as a national holiday to provide economic relief. Honor the American worker and restore faith in the American dream. Whereas the United States has a proud tradition of national holidays that honor our history, culture and values. Yet no holiday directly addresses the economic burdens placed on working families. I mean, they, they call something called Labor Day, but Labor Day don't give back to the people, we just go out and barbecue. Right? Don't give back, nothing back to the people. Whereas the cost of food, fuel, housing and basic necessities have risen dram- dramatically. Leaving millions of Americans struggling to meet their daily needs, whereas in the nineteen twenties, listen to this, the nineteen twenties, everyday items such as bread, milk. And other staples cost only a fraction of today's prices. And restoring these historic costs even for one day will provide immense relief to working families. And I'm talking about one day of where products can be six cents. And we can go and collect and buy. And I know a lot of people have mixed signals about that, mixed feelings about that, because when you think about what happens usually at, um, uh. Black Friday events or, uh, during Christmas time, people just get ruled. When things are less priced or free or half off, you know, and there should be a demand or, um, heavy. Uh, you know. Security i- in those efforts, um, and a heavy moral talk before we go into those stores on that particular day. You know, and we just need a moral, um, refocus in our community, period, to talk in the minds of our youth. Um, about morals, what we shouldn't, shouldn't do to other people, right? We shouldn't be stepping on people's rights, right? We shouldn't have to, we shouldn't do that, we shouldn't have to, right? Why cause harm to other people, all this fighting and and and, uh, because somebody's hair and shoes and clothes and all this stuff. Things that hip hop, music, or artists, or this, 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 we, this fake phony world of. You know, uh, the music world has presented to our youth. You know, and 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 it's not just our youth, it's older folks are are lunatics as well at times. And we need moral training, we need to just redevelop, I know they say you can't teach an old dog new tricks, but hey, if you don't learn it quick. The cops will teach you, uh, yeah, and they they do a bang up good job. Literally, they do a bang up good job with it. And we don't, we don't, we don't need that, we we need less of police brutality in the midst, right? Let's go on, on the food assistance, food assistance. We must be clear, every household should have access to food assistance, to EBT without shame, without restriction. A minimum, a minimum of four hundred and above, because no child, no elder, no family should be forced to choose between paying bills and eating dinner. Right? On survival assistance. And when crisis strikes, when the government fails, or when martial law is declared, we need to ensure that no citizen is left behind. I propose, I propose the Survival Assistance Law, which guarantees every household access to free survival kits. Including water, food, medical supplies and essential resources. In the event of government shutdowns, natural disasters or the suspension of basic services. Now, they're talking about a government shutdown now. And how many do you know, or how many, uh, survival kits has, have they provided in the first government shutdown? They don't think about, uh, survival kits in the midst of government shutdowns, as if a government shutdown is something that just. Randomly happens or something that's just, oh, it's gonna be okay, or it's just something to gloss over. Right? Nobody is talking about it, none of the leaders that's running, uh, again, when we get people thinking like I'm thinking. We need that person in office, we need righteous individuals in the office, uh, that make some changes, because. We don't need, not none, need not one of. Government shutdowns and we not offered a survival kit, right? Survival Assistance Law, which guarantees every household access to free survival kits, including water, medical supplies. And et cetera, right? I'm asking you, how long will we allow silence, how long will we, we accept injustice? And when will we rise together to demand the fairness, dignity and justice that is rightfully ours? Again, my name is James Chandler and I will not be silent, will you? Because when the people rise, no corrupt system can stand. Thank you for hearing me on that. That was just the plan, the list, and I still have to go over, uh, my petition. Wanted to look at that really quick. It is called twenty twenty-four. Dash two zero two. It hasn't even. I mean, um. Janice Winfrey, signed it, city clerk, office of the city clerk. Andre P. Gilbert, the second deputy city, deputy city clerk, signed on it, you know, the city of Detroit, right? But it hasn't really been mentioned in the news, it hasn't been really broadcast like that. And, um. Again. This must go forward. And as I mentioned about undenied aid, how can I help under other individuals outside of African Americans or? Uh, again, uh, this includes everyone though, this includes everyone, even African Americans, but this includes everyone. But I know that, like I said, reparations is restitution, so African, African Americans, we deserve that, my people deserve that. And, um, I rather, I don't care what other nations say about that, I mean, because other people have received their reparations. And, you know, really feel that they deserved it, right? But, let's get into, um, my petition, uh, number one. I have forty, forty-three policies in this petition, and number one being, implement. A new employee retention plan called Emotional Distress Pay. Matching what employees make from their employment, every week or bi-weekly. Example, if an employee earns twelve, twelve thirty-nine. Right? One thousand two hundred and thirty-nine dollars, they should receive in total twenty-four seventy-eight. Double, matching what the person make. Again, while you waiting on this check, you know, i- it's like a, it's a emotional distress pay. It's an emotional distress pay, you know, like going to court and you get hurt and you're trying to sue somebody. You're, you're going to, um, sue, not only getting your, um, payment of what's owed to you. But you're gonna also sue for pain and suffering, so this is like the pain and suffering payment for ha- having to wait. The two weeks for this pay, because things happen in two weeks, things, you know, drastically changes your life and. You know, you never know what happens, you know, funerals happen, things happen, and you need your money. So that was number one. Two. Um, implement stricter gun control laws to prevent mass shootings and protect the safety of our citizens. Now, when I mentioned that in two, a lot of people might have some issues with that, but. When I mentioned that in two, I'm not talking about taking away people's gun rights, you know? We still have constitutional rights, now, don't get that twisted, right? But. Um, we need some show enough examiners on people's minds to see whether they. Deserve to have a gun. Because there are people out there that is, uh, disabled in their mind, disabled people, and, um. You know, we have incidents where they are on the road, road rage, and they just pull out the guns and start shooting people. Right? We gotta have self-control people. That's why we need like moral talks, moral seminars in our communities. Counseling in our communities. To, uh, shape us back to, um, uh. To sound, uh, minded people, you know? It's the best way I can think of it right now, I can't think of another way to say it, but, yeah. Three, implement fair laws befitting the American Constitution and Bill of Rights, sign years seventeen seventy-six and seventeen eighty-nine. Four, implement laws to safeguard personal information, and if shared, pay people for their information being shared. Lot of that going on, right? Our information is being shared all the time online, we're not getting paid nothing for our information being shared. Right? They have our, they have our, they get our social security number and sell our information, they get our address. Sell our information, they get our phone number, they sell our information, right? They get a yes and a voting. In a voting thing, right? They get our signature. Sell our information, right? A lot of times. We need to get paid for that. Five, implement election disqualifications and impeachment for leaders who disregard the Constitution and Bill of Rights without immunity. Account- accountability is needed. Six, implement affordable court fees, no more than fifty dollars. They go crazy about those court fees. Ridiculous prices, again, the extortion that they do with the courts. And again, I have forty-three policies, of course, I'm not gonna read all this. Twenty twenty-four dash two oh two is the petition. It's been signed, notarized and everything. And again, before the city of Detroit. And it needs to go national, it's been sent to legislation senators and the presidents. Uh, not just, uh, Trump, but Biden as well, uh, Kamala Harris, you know? Who all have been unresponsive to it. Uh, of course, you get these automatic replies, which I'm sick of, you know, but those are robots, not them. Right? So, again, uh, just wanted to share that. Going back to the ballot. Go and vote in person. Again, I'm James Chandler, running for city council, Detroit, district one. Against James Tate, you're gonna write me in, James Chandler, I'm a write-in candidate, write me in. Please go write in, Teresa Williams for city clerk. Do not, do not, do not vote for Janice M. Winfrey. Do not vote for Mary Sheffield, vote for Solomon Kenlock, right? Vote Ramon Jackson, okay? Write in Ramon Jackson for city council at large. And whoever your second person is. Uh, leave that up to you, but please vote in Ramon Jackson at this time, that's all I have for you, right there in city council at large. And police commissioner Oliver, N- um, not, Nat, G A N T T, Oliver. There was another guy, um. That, um, my group of Black Heritage was, uh, looking at as well, um. Um, I forget his name. Let me see. Just to throw his name out there. So it was Oliver. And the other guy's name was. Here with me, y'all. And I'm about to be out your way. I was just looking at his name earlier. Willie E. Burton, Willie E. Burton. So that was the, uh, other, uh, person, uh, for, uh, police commissioner, but you can only vote. Not more than once, so. So, again, Oliver, and then it was Willie E. Burton, was on the list, so, uh, between those two. Okay? So, if you have any questions that you wanna ask me, so this is the time to do so. This is the time to do so. So again, if you wanna help, um, me and my cause, you could just share. My post. So again, if you wanna help. Share my post. Me and my cause, you could just share. Post it on your page, share it, uh, to other family members, share it to your friends. That I am running, I'm a candidate that has to be written in, James Chandler for city council, district one, Detroit. Running against James Tate, who's been in office sixteen years. And what has come of the city since he's been in office, that's the question. What will we do about it? What will, what will we do about these, the the cheating? The cheating in these elect- The cheating in these elections, what will we do about it since we know that they're cheating now? There has been talks about starting um massive demo- demonstrations. To go down there to the city uh Council Building, or the the city building. In regards to these um fraudulent things that they've been doing. Uh but not only that, but to get our voices heard and some laws demanded, changed. Uh just like all those things I just mentioned in my policies, you know, um. We need to make those things a reality, as I was watching a video of an older lady talking about the housing crisis. And how um buying a house was at a three percent, you know, interest, where people was getting these houses, but now it's at a seven percent. And it's hard to really buy houses, a lot of people don't wanna buy houses and they can't. Because of the pricing and the price gouging, you know, we have to stop the price gouging. Um we have to make people ready and available. And um able to buy homes and houses, you know, um people want that freedom. People shouldn't be denied that right. If you want a house, you should be able to qualify and have a house. So, again, I'm I'll close out, you can leave your questions, even after the closing of this, I'll see it if you just send it in, your questions. I answer it the best of my ability, but again, I'm James Chandler, running for City Council, District One, Detroit, Michigan. You have to write me in, I'm a write-in candidate, so go ahead, November fourth is the day you need to go and vote. Um they they're sending out early ballots, if you choose to do it that way, uh you gotta write me in, mark me in. James Chandler. All right, everybody, have a good night, thank you for your time, thank you for listening, and I hope that you enjoyed everything I said and um. Really um understand where I'm coming from. Um even on the reparations talk, cuz a lot of people, you know, I went before police officers who, when I was going door to door. Um seeing um they they, a lot of cops wouldn't vote or wouldn't wouldn't um support me. Because they're for the city or they work for the city, you know, it's been like a conflict of interest of some sort. Um and and they don't believe that black people will act right if they get their reparations. So that's another reason why they didn't vote in that uh when I was talking about that tone of reparations. A lot of our people don't believe that reparations is possible, they've 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 given up on the talk of reparations. And and it's sad to hear that, um you know, things that our forefathers have talked about. All these years, they feel that it won't come, right? But how long did they wait for a Messiah to come and the Messiah came, he was born, right? But he's coming back again, right, and a lot of people recognize that, right, and and saw the 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 blessing in that, right? But have lost. Have have lost faith in reparations, now we shouldn't, we shouldn't. There are still people out here that can get the ball rolling and push through, you know, we just have to stand with them and cause a massive. Assemblage to get these things going. Again, I'm James Chandler, running for City Council, District One, Detroit, Michigan. You have to write me in and have a good night, everyone.